Good evening and welcome to the March 11th to 2019 Meeting of the Marquette City Commission. If everyone will rise please and with the commission, repeat the pledge to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you will, please read the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Stonehouse?
Here.
High School? Ms. Atwell?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Lach?
Here.
Mr. Balkowski?
Here.
Ms. Welch?
Here.
Mr. Langley.
Here.
Before, as I segue into the approval of the agenda, just a word for everybody to understand that this is something that we do every year, is where we bring members of the Marquette Senior High School Student Council to sit with us, to so to speak, ride shotgun at a city commission meeting. It has been extraordinarily successful event, I think, for both sides and for everybody. We all gain from it, we all learn from it, and it certainly is an opportunity for a little growing experience for our future leaders. So, that's why they're here and they will to appoint, participate as we go through the meeting. That brings us then to the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, you have an agenda in front of you. If I may have either a motion for approval or for so changes you may desire. Commissioner Hill?
No.
I'm sorry. Say again. Commissioner Smith?
I move we approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Campana?
I would second that.
Commissioner Hill, any comments? I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith, any comments?
No comments, thank you, Mayor.
I'm working on it here, guys. Commissioner Campana?
None here.
None here. Any other commissioner? Hearing none, all those commissioners in favor of the approval of the agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no. Hearing none, the motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to announcements. I have no announcements tonight. That brings us then to boards and committees. Commissioners, we do have a series of reappointments to be done. Doreen Friend to the Public Arts Commission for a term ending 2/26/22. Barbara Coleman, Presque Isle Advisory Committee, term ending 4/1 of 22. Nick Leach, Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority for a term expiring 4/30/22. Michael Larson, Planning Commission Appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending 2/15/20. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to appoint, reappoint. Do I need to list all of them? Okay. As presented, thank you.
As presented. Is there a second? Commissioner Hill?
Second.
Commissioner Schlegel, comments?
None, but, yeah, again, thank you for serving. Reappointments mean that these people, a lot of them have put up anywhere from one to three years on an advisory committee in a role that is totally voluntary, and it is exciting to be a part of that process, and I'm excited to see these people keep going. So, thank you very much for serving.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
I second everything that he said.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any commissioner against the motion, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, the motion passes seven to zero. That then brings us down to the recognition of outgoing members. If any of the folks are in the audience, I would ask you to please meet me at the podium to your left, and that would be the members of the Parks and Recreation Master Ad Hoc Steering Committee. That committee has done great work in putting our master plan together for recreation. Master Plan is a critical document, runs for five years, and the purpose of it in part is to be able to determine from the community what it wants to see, what recreation events it values more than others, gives us a priority for the future, and also gives us an opportunity, because it's in the master plan, to seek additional funding to make those dreams a reality. So, it is a critically important document. But Michelle Cook, Teresa Hamery, Nathan Kaser, Carly Sandstrom, Lynette Finn-Wolstenhurst, if you could meet me up at the podium, I would appreciate it. We have the best here.
Right? We're the best of the best. We're the scum, you folks.
Carly, if I can present to you our certificate, please, from the city, in faith and really in recognition. And, sorry to be...
Teresa Hamery.
Oh, Teresa, I've known that. Right here. Teresa, your certificate to you again, and thank you for one more that you've done. We each also have a City of Marquette official tee shirt for you.
Yay!
And if for any reason it is not your color or does not fit, please see the city manager, and he will personally find the correct one for you.
Does this mean parking tickets?
This isn't Chicago. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This brings us to public comments then. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone desiring to make public comments?
Good evening. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic. I'd like to reserve time to speak on item number five, Founder's Landing Pile Reuse Preliminary Design Contract Award. Thank you.
Anyone else, public comment?
I'm Charlie West, 440 East Prospect. When my dad died, he was cremated. My mom was claustrophobic, and she didn't want to think about anybody being in a box. So, he was cremated, and we buried his ashes on an island at our camp. It seemed like a good idea at the time. Now, 60 years later, I'm the only one of the family nearby, and none of us could find the exact spot if we wanted to. So, on a pleasant summer day, as I am kayaking around the lake, it's kind of a nice memory. Over these last couple of months, frankly, it just seems cold and lonely. My mom's ashes are dug in at the memorial garden of one of our local churches. Again, it seemed like a good idea at the time. We think of her ashes there, where she spent a lot of her life, along with the ashes of some of her friends, and that's nice. I'm still the only one around, and I don't go to that church anymore. So, again, it's kind of a mixed memory there. As I think forward to when I die, if I have a green burial, I wouldn't think of my body or my ashes being in a particular place, but rather, the place where I was buried would be the place from which I set out to re-inhabit the creation. It could be in Chassel or Republic or Big Bay or Park Cemetery here in Marquette, because I wouldn't think of my remains staying there or being stuck there, like my dad's ashes in a mayonnaise jar on an island at our camp. It would simply be the place from which I set out into the creation. In a year or two, there I am, the worm. In another year or two, there I am, the grass or the wildflowers. Another couple more years, the bird, and then the tree. It really wouldn't matter so much where I started out, because I wouldn't have to think of myself as staying there. So, I don't know about you, but to me, that sounds just right. It would be helpful and easier for my family and friends if it happened here in Marquette. So, I'm really excited that we're closer to having green burials in Marquette, and I want to thank you for all the time and effort and attention that you're putting into it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission?
Good evening. George Meister with GEI Consultants. Nothing really to comment then, just want to make you aware that I'm here, and then some folks from DeRoche or Marine who we're partnering with on the design-build project, item five, are here if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Frank Jeff Ferro, 350 East Rid Street, Marquette, to speak on item five. These are my opinions. February 25th, members claimed to act in our best interest but voted against the public sentiment on two huge decisions, the only two action items on that agenda. None of five who spoke on the maritime road design favored it, and only two of the 25 cannabis comments favored opting out. Oddly, Mr. Angelie said the people's preference is what's on the maritime drawing. We know that's untrue from public comment. His design is flawed, yet this board rode with it despite the opposition. In fact, the planning board voted against it. Even the traffic chair asked why no one's done a study or survey of the area, imperative when changing the character of a neighborhood or destroying more trees. The loss of character will be evident once that corner of our lakeshore is urbanized. Regarding cannabis, Mr. Schlegel told us he's changing his vote because there's no timing in the ordinance. This misled us into believing we had a fourth vote not to opt out, and that the public majority had won for a change. That wasn't until he was shown a date on the ordinance, causing him to change his mind again. This begs the question as to why he hadn't read the entire ordinance prior to arriving unprepared for our meeting. Ms. Reynolds noticed the public was left out. Where was the public in all this, she asked? The answer is totally ignored. 23 comments not to opt out. How can this board claim to act in our best interest when the disparity is so clear? The male majority refused to consider any cerebral approach, for example, writing legislation to warrant prospective entrepreneurs. Direct our attorney to prepare a letter of caution for shop owners to sign prior to being issued a license. Fair warning, they may be later subject to fall, subject to state rules, which could force them to relocate. Require them to have an independent lab test the quality and not to locate where this board deems appropriate. Their signatures on this document would free the city from liability while at the same time generate tax revenue for state road repair and help those who benefit but don't fit the medical criterion. This board is asked to revisit its flawed decisions. Refrain from opting out and retain the scenic character of our entrance to Lighthouse Park. It's always great to see a new group of residents learn from themselves how pathetically this board operates, how the majority of members have their minds made up ahead of even the most compelling and overwhelming testimony. They bolster my cause each time they do it. This board is so helplessly out of touch with the people. February 25th, Mr. Campana took issue with me saying Mr. Stonehouse is conveniently associated with a museum. How can this be not denied? He is. And much of the pavement shown will deface our landscape largely to facilitate nine maritime parking spots. Thus, the million dollars relocated from College Avenue is largely wasted, and that it gives us no more than what we have now, while every car on College Avenue continues to go bumpity bumpity bump.
Mr. Ferro, your time is up. Thank you. Anyone else desiring to address the commission?
David Allen, 805 North Front Street. I'm here on behalf of legal women voters of Marquette County. I just want to wish everyone a happy Sunshine Week. This is Sunshine Week, which is a celebration of transparent government, looking at two areas especially, open records laws, that it gives the public access to documents that are part of the government's business, and then meetings like this, open meetings laws that give us access to what's going on with the government. It's an essential compact between the electorate and the elected officials that these open laws are present. It ensures that the public has a say, and ensures that elected officials know what's going on, and it keeps us on the same page. And in conclusion, I'd just like to say, I've been very happy with especially how this commission operates. Special thanks to the staff who do an excellent job with agendas, minutes, all that stuff is available ahead of time, and of course, I think that these meetings are enormously important as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission?
Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave. Sorry, I just came up from work. I'm kind of winded. I'd like to talk on number five when that possibly comes around, but I might not be able to stick around for it. I'm here mainly to say that I think my comments about snow removal have been misconstrued. I don't come to you because I'm complaining about the work that our crews are doing. I come to you because you're the ones who give them money to do the work that they're doing. I think they're doing a great job as well. Please, I hope nobody thought I was talking down about the plow drivers. I'm asking you, as a city commissioners, to recognize that in the last 20 years, we've had 12 record snowfall years. So, we keep breaking records. It seems to be a new norm. Give them three times as much as they're asking for. Straight up, I paid enough in my fines to say, I think I got a dog in this fight, that after $1,000 last year in fines for parking violations, I kind of want you to give them more money so we don't have as many more parking violations. That aside, I also want to talk about the concept, because I might not make it back, the concept that everybody here except for Ms. Hill and I think Mr. Schlegel were part of a work session, and since work sessions aren't really recorded, I don't know when this was, but Mr. Stonehouse, you and I both agreed that there should be solar panels on top of the ORDOC, the one agreement we happen to have over the years. My point is, the ORDOC seems to be dragging its feet, and we seem to be in a rush to make this next pier happen. My question is, will this impact the financial stability of the ORDOC plans? And second, could we use whatever resources we are trying to move from the pier at Presque Isle to the fill at the ORDOC and allow them to have a more collaborative effort with us instead of a competitive effort, which is what this feels like? We are putting boats next to a place that used to house boats. What if they included in their system places to house boats? So, my question is also then, since I have a minute left, I look up and behind you, there's piers and pylons and beautiful sunrises. I try to take sunrise photos off the lake, and right now, the boardwalk that we currently have that we paid for is not accessible. It's full of snow. There is no way to literally walk down it without being in waist-deep snow. So, my question about the pier, if it is a city, bless you, if it is a city effort, can, is there going to be seven-month access, or are we cutting this off and putting a... I see a gate on some of these drawings, by the way. I think everybody should have these. I see a gate. So, are we denying access to anyone who doesn't have a boat, denying access to anyone who doesn't have a wintertime activity to go on? I'm about to be cut off, so I got to go back to work. Y'all have good night.
Good night. Anyone else to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us down to a presentation on the election board by city clerk Chris Hazers.
Good evening. This is the election board annual report. We switched it up a little bit, so... In review, members Barbara Hein, Margaret Schwam, Judy Bergland, Linda Rowe, and myself as chair, and my deputy is the liaison. We are authorized by the city charter and state law. We represent the residents of Marquette, and we certify elections, we appoint the election inspectors, and conduct all the accuracy tests of the equipment for each and every We started something new this past year, and that was basically due to the new equipment. It's a little bit slower because it scans and takes a picture of your ballot. That pretty much forced us to start a counting board. That counting board is located here in commission chambers. It's a sequestered board. They actually have to sign in and out to go to the bathroom. So, we are... Excuse me, I hit this backwards. So, we are gearing up with new people, new equipment on this counting board. We used it for both August and November, and we will continue to do that in the next election, elections I should say, excuse me. So, you can see by these stats, we processed a little over 2,300 absentee ballots in November, and with proposal three, that will probably greatly increase due to all the new legislation. So, here are the changes. Guarantees straight party ticket voting option, automatic voter registration. So, previous to this legislation, when you went into the Secretary of State and you renewed your driver's license, you bought a tag for a boat trailer, whatever your transaction was there, you would have to tell them that you chose to register to vote. With new legislation, you are now automatically registered, which kicks registrations out of sight from my office. But it's a good thing, because we want everybody that's able to, to register to vote. You can also register up to and on Election Day, which is a totally new factor. And you can cast an absentee ballot without providing a reason, which is a great thing. It opens up a lot more opportunities for people that were working or just simply couldn't get to the polls. So, now you don't need a reason to that. We are still waiting on information from the state. They don't quite all have all of their ducks in a row as far as how this is all going to happen, but we're anticipating a lot of increase. So, our upcoming meetings, April 25th, to verify candidates for local office, nominating petitions, packets will be available April 1st this year. They're due by the 23rd of April, and there'll be an ad in the paper to announce that. So, we have two commission seats open and one board of light and power seat open. July 11th, we appoint election inspectors for August. The 23rd, we conduct the accuracy test of all the equipment, and we start all over again September 26th, appointing inspectors. October, we conduct the accuracy test and right into the November election. So, there's very little time in between for us to, we're about cleaning up one election and hopping into another. So, that's kind of sweet and short, and if you have any questions, I'd certainly welcome
Just a question with all those changes. Is there any kind of plan with how we do this with the increase? I just remember the last election results took a really long time because we had so many absentees, and then if we're going to have even more, if we have some kind of plan in place for that?
We do, so, equipment is one thing. We're looking, we're already looking at adding another tabulator. Our biggest issue right now is staffing for the precincts and for the county board. I pulled six really good workers out of the polls, which shorted my precincts, to do the county board, and just because of the overwhelming numbers in August and then different proposals in November, it just threw a monkey into the whole thing. So, we're trying to get out ahead of it, including the registrations. We're going to conduct some voter registration drives around the city so that that might bring more attention to, yes, you can register on Election Day, but it's really an easier process if we can register ahead of time and verify where you live, because that's one of my main concerns.
Thank you, Chris. That's a great presentation. Looking forward to seeing what these changes mean for us and for everyone else in Michigan. But my question was, I know Jocelyn Benson, the Secretary of State, the newly elected Secretary of State, was talking about allowing absentee ballots to be counted up to four days before the election. She's proposing that change. I know it hasn't been solidified yet. Wondering if that happens, how that impacts our budget, I know whether or not we'll need that machine, I guess.
There's a possibility that we wouldn't. If we didn't, if we didn't get the new machine and we had four days prior to process ballots, that would just mean additional staffing, but it could then be staggered, so it would probably save us money and we wouldn't need that machine. But the security issues and how they're going to tell us we have to lock down the ballots once they're counted, it would be a complicated process. So, we're waiting to hear. I welcome it, if there's any way we can do it, though.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question on the absentee ballot. I can't, I've never done it, so I don't know if there's an age, it used to be an age limit on it, but currently with the new law, will that mean anybody 18 and over can get absentee?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the Secretary of State is also encouraging those 16 and 17 to register.
So, when you said the registrations won't be going through your office anymore, it would all go through the state? Could you just clarify? I wasn't sure if I really understood what that meant.
No, previously, so, Secretary of State's office, when you went in to change your driver's license or change your address, you would have to tell them that you chose to register to vote, and they would give you a form to fill out there, which then went through the state and wound up in my office if you resided in the city. Now, when you go there and the new legislation, you're automatically registered. So, if you weren't previously registered or you're new to town, I'm not exactly sure if they're keeping up with the volume that's going to happen, because it's an automatic registration.
So, everyone, so, everyone who has a driver's license...
Correct, correct, yeah.
The other commissioners? Thank you very much for your guys.
Thank you.
I haven't had the experience, Commissioner, stopping by on a flash of these, watching these folks really hard trying to bring it all together here in September. Many ways, I think, both the responsibility of citizens, not only to vote, but to participate in helping to vote, helping others to vote, and being part of that critical team. So, thank you very much for what you do and what your attempts do when they're in here in our election. That brings us down to the consent agenda. Commissioners, I will need a motion to accept the agenda. Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds, any comments?
None.
Commissioner Frazier?
No comments.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Hill?
I just want to bring to people's attention that there are two public hearings that are being scheduled in the consent agenda. One of them is about considering and discussing our fireworks ordinance, which has, was a big, has been a big topic of discussion, so just heads up that that's going to be coming up, and I think we're going to... The state law has changed, so we have an opportunity to change the law here in Marquette.
Any other commissioners? Let me exercise my right then, just to clarify a little bit what Commissioner Hill said. You might recall that following last year's Fourth of July, the city passed a more stringent fireworks ordinance. That was put together to be the maximum ordinance we could under existing state law. And the state of Michigan has since tightened up state law, in other words, allowing us to do more things, to make that ordinance tighter, take more days off, more hours off it, so that you don't have the fireworks going off as much as they were previously. And what the city attorney did was take our ordinance that we passed following last Fourth of July and tighten that up even more. So, I think that's something that will make people very happy, and I would encourage folks that support it to be here and talk about it, too, when we have that public hearing next time. Commissioners, all those commissioners in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any commissioner opposed to the motion, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, the motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to new business, and city clerk, if you would read the background material, please, on item five, Founder's Landing Pile Reuse. material, please, on item five, Founder's Landing Pile Reuse.
Thank you, sir. Background, as part of the Brownfield Plan for Founder's Landing, various public improvements were agreed to be made and funded through the Tax Increment Financing Plan. The final public improvements required for the Founder's Landing Development Project includes redevelopment of the pier and reuse of the removal of existing piling structures. The project area is located on Lake Superior east of and adjacent to the Founder's Landing Development and south of Lower Harbor Or Dock. The north side of piles are directly east of Faraga Street, and the south side of piles are east of the Hampton Inn. At its August 27th, 2018, regular meeting, the City Commission approved a contract for GEI Consultants of Marquette to provide a feasibility study and conceptual design for the reuse of the piles. GEI found the use of the piles to be feasible and provided a concept that incorporates public input from all known stakeholders and was recommended by the Harbor Advisory Committee. At this time, staff is recommending the City Commission waive the bidding process and continue to move forward with GEI to provide the preliminary phase of the design at a cost of $205,430, as outlined in the attached proposal. This preliminary design phase will bring the project to the point where GEI's design-build partner, DeRocher Marine Company, can develop accurate material costs for the final phase of the project. GEI was the highest-scoring firm for the request for code for the feasibility study and conceptual design. They are intimately familiar with the existing conditions as well as the public and city staff input. The need to waive the bidding process is an effort to utilize DeRocher Marine Company for the Founder's Landing Pier Reuse and the Prescott Marina Pier Replacement Projects. The Prescott Marina Project is currently estimated to be around $300,000 over budget, and constructing of two projects simultaneously would eliminate mobilization costs for the Marina Project and may be able to eliminate transportation and disposal of dredge and bin wall fill materials by using those materials within the pile reuse project. After this preliminary design phase, the second and final phase of this project will be brought before the City Commission for approval in mid-April 2019. It is anticipated that the Prescott Marina Project will be brought before the City Commission for approval within the same timeframe. Fiscal effect, adequate funding has been allocated through the Founder's Landing Brownfield Tiff Plan. Recommendation, waive the bidding process, approve the proposal from GEI Consultants for the preliminary design phase for the Founder's Landing Pier Project, and direct the city attorney to develop a professional services agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
City Manager, if you can provide a little bit of additional detail on the project?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Just a little bit of background, this project has been about twenty years in the making. I know it has come to light only recently, maybe publicly, but this was originally a concept in the Brownfield Plan when the Founder's Project was brought to an idea form, when the city obtained the Founder's property from the railroad. Anyway, as part of that process, the city agreed to either reuse these pilings or remove them. We've done some considerable work and research, and through the hiring of GEI, we've determined that it is feasible and probably better environmentally to reuse the pilings. We had a work session three, four weeks ago where you saw the conceptual drawings that GEI had provided. They are not the design, but they are what we would hope to end up with, or something in a similar fashion. And we think it's in the best interest that GEI continue on this road by continuing with the actual design. Now, you've read in the background that we have an issue or a potential issue with Prescott Marina, which is also scheduled to be reconstructed this summer, and that our estimates are about $300,000 over budget. And because we have the piling field and the Prescott Project coming to fruition at the same time, we entertain the idea that maybe we could save costs at Prescott by utilizing the same construction firm for both projects. I'd also note that, and George, you can correct me, I think there's only like two, we don't have a lot of options for this kind of work. There might be two firms that we have availability to, and GEI has worked extensively with DeRocher. And we just feel that if we do this in a controlled fashion, if we, if we take advantage of the opportunities that we have, we can bring both projects in under budget, or at least on budget. One thing I would point, two things I'd wanna point out before I'm finished here is that, contrary to what some people might believe, this project is a public project. It is on the Founder's Landing Shoreline, which is public property in its entirety. And these pilings or these boardwalks that we are proposing will also be publicly owned and publicly utilized. They are not being built for the Founder's people, they are not being built for the hotel, they're being built for the public in Marquette, so they're completely accessible. Someone commented earlier that, or, you know, will people have access from the boat moorings? Will they have access to the general public? Yes, those are, those are moorings that we're talking about having, actually, we're actually looking at maybe parking meter type situation where people can park their boat, go into town for dinner, or visit downtown, and then leave. We're not looking at exclusive use, it's public use. And that's the entire motivation and the results we're looking for. The other thing I wanna mention is that we do have a permitting process that we have to go through. I think we're going to be on time with our state permitting, but we could be delayed with our Army Corps of Engineers. I mean, it's possible or probable, but we're hoping to get both these projects going by the end of this summer. If we can't do that, it would be because of the permitting, or you guys voted down, which I hope you don't do, but if the permitting takes longer than we anticipated, we may be looking at next spring for a start time. Thank you.
Thank you. We had several citizens that wish to comment regarding this item. Ms. Brum, I think you were the first one.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetics Street. I attended the work session where the first designs were presented for these modified piers, and they looked gorgeous, and I couldn't wait to walk out on them and see the lake from a different perspective. Last year I ran for City Commission, I met a lot of people, and several of the people I met were in wheelchairs, specifically in powered wheelchairs, and they spoke poignantly of the lack of access they had to the lake. And they meant it was hard for them, first of all, there was no beach accessibles to get their wheelchairs in, they didn't have wheelchairs to go there. And then one gentleman told me about literally growing up on a boat with his dad and going out on the lake every day, looking in the water, fishing, things like that. And what he asked for was that when they started to build more, that there'd be an opportunity to be accessible, and I understand from the city manager, this will be an accessible pier, but he also asked to be able to look under the water. And I said, what do you mean? And he said, well, it's like the glass-bottom boats that run out of munising, you can look down under there, but I can't get on those boats either because they're not accessible to a person in a powered chair. So I had the opportunity to speak tonight before the meeting started with some of the engineers, and they said in the current plan, they don't have any translucent panels that could be inserted so that people could look under the water while they were strolling on the pier. And I'm here tonight to ask that that be considered to be added in, not as a permanent thing. I understand you wouldn't want it in the winter, but there's so many ways, there's so many things we put in the water in the spring and we take them out in the fall. I kinda think you could have one section of this to have regular paneling during the winter, and then in the spring, you could take the regular paneling out and put in the glass-bottom feature so that everybody could walk out on the pier and look underneath the water. And one of the gentlemen back there said the best spot for that would only be about five feet deep. And I was thinking to myself, well, there's a lot of cool stuff that happens underwater at five feet, and that's what they're looking for. Also, you could partner with your colleagues in the arts and crafts industry in Marquette. You could have underwater sculpture shows with lights and show off another aspect of the Marquette scene that is unique to Marquette. So this is an opportunity for you to show again that Marquette is an inclusive community for everyone, including people in wheelchairs, and also to show off again how beautiful our lake is to people who don't have access to it the way we all do. So I would ask you, if you approve this plan, that you allow for modification in the future to have these panels inserted, you don't have to have the whole thing be a glass-bottom panel, it's not that requirement, but that, right now, it's not part of the plan, and I'm hoping you'll leave a spot open for this to be included as time goes on, because we're not, you know, if you're not in a wheelchair now, you're lucky. Someday you might be, and you'll wish somebody had done this for you. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Verto. These are my opinions. This proposal is generally right on with the full public access, downcast lighting, and good landscaping features. A conceptual drawing shows the north pier running to Ripley Rock, but it doesn't look incorporated into the final proposal. Adding the rock to the plan, if not now, at a later date, might be an added bonus. Concerns are that the rock may become trampled if accessible, and whether any species are dependent on that rock. The same drawing also depicts a wider south pier, while the one pictured nine pages later is much narrower. Because the narrow version looks wide enough to accommodate two passing wheelchairs, it's wide enough. We may wish to study the feasibility of a wider landing at the end of the south pier, if not now, at a later point when funding allows, and we may know the need is there to provide room for fishing and recreating. Of course, the plan for the south pier is delightful as is. Three concerns, however, arise with the north pier. One is the tall gate at the entrance from our boardwalk. While it's nice to have the gate so we can close it when safety factors dictate, it raises a concern as to what hours our pier will be accessible. I believe in 24-hour-per-day access on both piers, except when unsafe. The smaller gates that protect the boats and the slips are fine so long as public access extends to the end, as it appears. A lesser concern is the east end of the, a lesser concern is the east end of the north pier. Although the three suspended sail features are attractive, the end ought to be open, maybe by 20 feet or so, similar to the stretch between the sails and the shore. Keep the three sails at the same width, but build them 20 feet farther west, or a better option would be to keep them where they are and build the extension to Ripley Rock, or at least 20 feet farther east. My only real concern is the rowing and kayak storage building, which would block the view from much of our boardwalk, which is so stunning at this time. A more aesthetic design for the building may mitigate part of this concern, however, it's an intrusion nonetheless, not only from the boardwalk, but from the first part of the pier as well. Of course, some members will think, oh, that Frank will say anything to criticize a certain club, when the truth is, I've always advocated for them to have a safe place to store their skulls. About two years ago, we were told that the boat storage would be incorporated into the parking area in the new large building, which pacified us. Yet another change for the worse at Founder's has occurred. We're sick of being lied to when these lies impact other aspects of our lake shore usage. Please consider an alternative, perhaps open storage with fencing similar to the boardwalk, or restrict access to, so that they can safely have their skulls there without getting them damaged. An ongoing concern is this board's unwillingness to tweak a plan. It's either all or none. Of course, in this case, I'd rather see the plan incorporated as presented than nothing at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave. I noticed the papers are still up here. These are printouts of the schematic. I just wanted to say that it's not something weird that I did, or anything weird, it's what was in the printout, or in the, in your PDF filing, but not presented. So this is one of those things that I'm actually kinda concerned that we, as a city, are doing projects of this magnitude, and it's the year 2019, and we don't have anything more than your imagination explaining to us what this is going to look like. My criticism is basically the process in which you are presenting a major plan, and there is no visual representation of that plan in this room, not even a printout on the side of a wall, but this is 2019. I, I know for a fact architectural designs have 3D printers that can print out a foam core representation. Things like that are what I'm asking for. So secondly, I'd like to encourage Ms. Brum, that design idea is phenomenal. Please encourage anybody who's making the design changes to include a glass-bottom pier of sorts. I'd even include, since you're cutting off the piers, to make an underwater cavern that you can go from the shoreline down underwater, under the pier itself, because we're cutting off those pylons, we can use that at half distance, and then you're in the water. That would be a really cool plan. At the same time, I understand, you guys have never taken any ideas that we present seriously, or at least changed your ideas based on how many people said stuff to change the ideas. I have very rarely, 100 people were in here for the trails, you said we were running out of money when you had to sell the trails. Now we're spending a whole lot of money on a park that's only used by less people than the trails are used by. I don't see anybody up here trying to promote, like, I wait to park my boat there. That's the other question. There are four marinas, and we're one of them. Is this gonna be a fifth marina down on Lake Shore Drive? Are we taking business away from the existing, I mean, Dockside Marine is there, and I don't see it really presented in this, these drawings, but what does Dockside Marine say about this? What is the emails that you may have received? Because, please, put these things in the record of what the business owners along this development are concerned about. If I was a marina owner, I'd be asking, why aren't you helping us make our marinas bigger? We have a huge park, or a huge pylon park. That's evident. So my debate is not whether or not you're going to approve this. I have no doubt you're gonna approve this and move forward. My question is, could you please, as a city, take the responsibility to give us visual representations of how you plan on changing our city's lines? The same thing with the Stonehouse Lighthouse Park. That whole conceptual drawing is all your image, and, we didn't see any.
Your time is up, Ms. Luttenberger. Thank you. Commissioners, what is, comment?
Yeah, pardon me. I just wanna make one more comment. I'm trying to work in a public forum before the actual final design is brought back to the commission. It's tentatively scheduled for April 4th at the forum room at the Lakeview Arena, and I don't know if GEI will be available with design schematics at that time, but if they're not, we may try to reschedule. But I'd like to have at least one opportunity for the public to visit and see the pictures and the designs that we're considering.
Thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier?
Get the mic on here. I make a motion to waive the bidding process, approve the proposal from GEI Consultants for preliminary design phase for Founder's Landing Pier Project, and direct the city attorney to develop a professional service agreement.
Is that a motion, Mr. Frazier, Commissioner Frazier? Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Frazier, any further comments?
Just reminding people, this is not a marina, it's just a day, just a pier, basically. If people park the boat at it for an hour, go have lunch, come back. It's not a marina. We have two public marinas in town, there's some other docks, we only have two public marinas in town. This is not a marina. Would not be affecting the other companies around town, or just, the other company you mentioned, the mentioned public, it's docks that bring, they just fix boats, they don't have dock storage, so.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think that this is a great opportunity for us to work on two very important projects for the community, and at the same time, allow us to bring both of those in at budget, if not under, through the smart thinking of the city staff and the, and those involved in this whole process. So, you know, to be able to wrap that, hopefully wrap that $300,000 into both of these projects to be done at the same time, I think is, it's just a very smart and responsible thing to do for the city of Marquette. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Campana?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just think that this is an exciting project for the residents of the city of Marquette, and perhaps for the tourists who will come here. The city is forced to do something with those pilings. The city is forced to do something with those pylons, and this will be a good use of those pylons. The money for this project is going to, is going to be from a brownfield TIF, so it's not necessarily coming out of the general fund immediately. As was stated earlier, this will be open to the public. It's not private. And as was also stated, this gives people a different view of the lake and the city. They'll be able to see the city from the pier, allows people to get out there to fish and whatnot. The question, I do have a question. I see our hydrologist, Mr. Compton, is here. It says here, "We're going to waive the bidding process." And whenever I see that, I think, "Oh, there's no competition for price here." But it's gonna, we have an estimate of $205,430 for this initial design, engineering design. If you would just calm me down and tell me that this is a good price and, and that, you know, I know they're not, this is a fair price, I'm sure, but I want to hear it from you.
I was tasked with looking at the price, and I reviewed that. And to put it in some perspective, in the past, when I was in the consulting world, a basic municipal project on land, doing the old-fashioned design and bid it out project, you would see a consulting fee of about 6%. Considering that this is a specialty marine design, I think there's going to be lots of permitting back and forth with the DEQ and the Corps of Engineers. I brought it to Mike. I said, "I think a little premium is probably due for those two factors." And I recommended that the overall design fee of everything not go over 8%. And I believe there has been negotiations toward that number. I'm not privy to that, but I think staff and the city manager has been talking with GEI in that regard.
It's going to be around 8%. It's going to be 80% or lower. Thank you. That should be good then.
Okay. Thank you.
So we can't complain about the price.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we did, as was stated, we had a work session, and some of the design ideas that folks had mentioned were brought up. And I particularly want to raise the issue of non-motorized access for kayakers and canoe. That's something we don't have in Lower Harbor right now in a, in an organized way. And I really hope that, we have a, we're going to be squeezing a fair number of uses onto that space, but I, I think it's really important that that group of people be, have a safe and reliable way to get their boats in and out of the water, and have a way to somehow store them on a, if they're just, you know, in town for a little while. The question of the scullers and what to do with them is another, I, I see that as sort of separate. Those are boats that people can't just take off their cars and put back on. But those are, again, these are all uses that are going to be coming down in this one space. I think it's terrific that we're making this more accessible for people to get out on the water, and, and that's a great, that's a great thing. I, at the work session, but I'll say it again, I raised the issue of having the lighting be for dark sky, so that when you're standing out on the end and you're looking up, you could actually hopefully see the stars and not just be overwhelmed by the lights. Another design factor is the fireworks shows, and making sure that there's safety and the ability to make sure that people can't get out where they were. So that's also guiding some of the design. And then in terms of maintenance of these spaces, raising those issues of low-cost maintenance as much as we possibly can, because that, I'm not sure how we're going to pay to maintain this. We have the money to build it, but then where, what's it going to do? How is this going to impact our parks budget, or our harbor budget, or wherever these things fall? But having a clear sense of what it's also going to cost to maintain this space, these new spaces that I think are going to become very well-used and beloved, as other parts of the city waterfront have. And, yeah, and inviting people to come in to the design process. Because again, this is public space, public dollars, and we want to hear what people want to have. And there's going to be a lot of different things going on in this space and how we can bring them all together well.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Smith?
I know it's already been said, but I just want to reiterate that we have to do something with these pylons. I've had that question a lot, you know, "Why are we spending money on this?" We're required by the DEQ to either remove them, and I know this has already been said, either remove them or build on them. So we have to do something. And I think that this design incorporates a lot of what residents would like to see if, if we have to build something. And we have money set aside specifically for this purpose. Again, it doesn't touch our general fund. So those are the questions I'm beginning again and again. You know, people see the issues we have on Lake Shore Boulevard, or some of our other budget issues, and they're going, "Why are we building a fishing pier?" It's kind of set aside money for this specific purpose. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Mayor Protan?
I just wanted to also reiterate that I'm excited about this. I think it's going to be something great for the public. I think we're going to have a lot of public input in the future to the comments that have been made about the certain things. The most common one that I've gotten from people, talking to people, is there was a lot of concern about, as Commissioner Hill mentioned, safety and fireworks, but I'm sure this is something that's on our minds, and when we have the fireworks down there, is that something somebody can walk out onto? These are all the things for the future and where we go forward. So I did mention this at our work session, but also, just in the future, as we look forward, I don't really particularly enjoy something being built on the lake shore that's not going to be some kind of see-through structure or something to that nature. But other than that, I'm excited.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Frazier?
Just go back. This is, again, like, this is to redo the pylons, there's nothing to do with the RODOC. RODOC is a great structure, but... To redo something with that, there's a company already out, there's a group already out there trying to redo that. But it's still, it's a good base, but it has a lot of failings, a lot of concrete falling. GA, you can talk to them, they've done a lot of tours of it, they've done examining of it. Lots of concrete has to be patched, because they're worried about concrete falling off in the head, which we don't want. So it's nothing to do with the RODOC. RODOC is great, it's going to, so the pylons be out, and as far as access, it has to be closed during bad weather, and it might be, we don't know what's going to be happening. It might be closed at night, too, because walking in the pier at night, you know, it's maybe like, in the night sky possibly, it's a good idea, but walking in the pier at night might not be the best thing, you know, but we'll see what happens. You know, maybe park hours, the public marinas lock when the staff leaves. They lock them like 8 o'clock in the morning until like 9 o'clock at night, and they lock them when the staff leaves. So that's an option, most likely.
Anyone else? Seeing none, let me make just a couple of comments. Comment was made about private marinas or marinas for business, and I need to remind people, we have two public marinas, Presky Island and Cinder Pond. Those are owned by the city of Marquette in effect, and we have two private marinas that are owned by their members, and that is the Fish Dock Association and the Association Dock. So there is no public, in other words, a private company owning a marina trying to make a living doing it. They don't exist. We don't have one. And this is also not a dock, not a marina, rather. The entire purpose of it is to allow the public to be able to get out on the water, enjoy our waterfront, get a different view of the city of Marquette, and do it in a very safe way. And that's what this would be able to do. Comments made relating to boats that may use it is simply that. Somebody can pull the boat in, park the boat, put some money in the parking meter, just as if you do downtown, go on downtown, eat in one of our fine restaurants, leave and go home. So there'll be some space for that, but that's not the purpose of this. That's just an add-on. The purpose is for everybody, you and I, to take the walk down the marina and just enjoy it. Enjoy the ambiance of Marquette, enjoy being part of a great port city on Lake Superior, of 175 years of being a port city. And we do water, and that's really a critical part of who we are as a, as a population and who we are as a city. So I certainly can support this project. Can we change a few things? We certainly can. Can we tweak it in design? We certainly can do some of those things, too. But by and large, I think it is a terrifically energetic project. It's one, if you look at the plans, I think you'll be amazed at the innovation and the initiative that's gone into different ways of skinning that cat to make it successful. So my, my planification done. Commissioners, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any commissioner against it, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, vote passes, or the, the motion passes seven to zero. That brings us down to number six, which is the resolution of intent to sell easements to Semco Natural Gas Line. I remind all commissioners that this will require a roll call vote when we are finished. City Clerk, if you will read the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Semco Energy Gas Company is planning to construct a nearly 43-mile natural gas pipeline and a pertinent facilities market connector pipeline between an interconnection with an existing Great Lakes gas transmission pipeline in Wells Township to proposed interconnections in the city of Marquette, all within Market County, Michigan. The Market Connector Pipeline consists of a 36.2-mile, 20-inch segment and a 6.4-mile, 10-inch segment. Semco is seeking easements from the city for construction and operation of the Market Connector Pipeline within the city of Marquette. City staff and the attorney have reviewed the easement requests and find they reflect the discussions held with Semco regarding the various city plans for the city, for the area, community development, and community services. To include discussion with the Nookayman and Trail Network are of appropriate monetary compensation value, finance, and assessing, and present no legal challenges, attorney. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation: Adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate the sale.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate the sale.
I'll second.
This is a project that's been in works for a long time, and we, I believe that this pipeline is going to come in through a snowmobile trail, so it's not going to disrupt the Harpwood property very much, and that the NTN bikers are okay with it. This, I believe, will give us redundancy to ensure that we have safety for natural gas coming to the city of Marquette. So this is a good project for the city, and I'm anxious to see it happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier? Good for the city, get more gas. Okay. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Smith?
I have a few concerns here from the NTN group that I just wanted to state for the record. I don't know that we'll be able to have any answers, and I do plan on supporting this motion, but I just want them to be known. The NTN was wondering about proposed future access opt-division. Sounds like there may be some impact on the NTN plans that are currently in place, so that's something that will need to be thought about in the future. This is for parcel 13. Also, they are worried about the timeline of construction and how it may impact different events that they have out on the premises, especially the Market Trails Fest, which is in June. I have the date here, June 21st to 23rd. So I'd be interested to see how that plays out with construction. And then thirdly, it sounds like they have already started clearing some of the trees on the west end, and that will impact one loop of their system. So we're kind of just wondering what the timeline will be, if we can get a little more information on Semco on that. But I do support going ahead with the easement. I just wanted those concerns to be known.
City Manager, can you help with that, with that explanation?
Yes, somewhat. I've been speaking a little bit with NTN, Kerry Gottlieb, the chair, primarily about parcel 13, because that's a parcel that we've been talking about potentially selling to NTN. In my conversations with him, the, I believe we're at a comfortable area with regard to what Semco is going to do there and what they're going to allow, as far as like driveways over the pipeline and things. I think that's going to work out just fine. And I've been told by the same, by the same people that they have no concerns and they understand the course of the pipeline and the impacts it might have. We're doing everything we can as a city to make sure that they impact the trails in the least amount possible. We've actually had them move, asked them to, to move the pipeline path from an original area to the current snowmobile trail, so that we have even a lesser impact in that, in that area, and that Semco has agreed to do that. So I think, John, unless you can add anything to that, I think we're doing the, making the least impact possible.
I can just add that the communication from Semco has been pretty good, and we feel pretty confident that they'll be able to give us timelines, you know, ahead of schedule for things that'll impact specific trails, so, such as the clearing that Commissioner Smith talked about. We're looking for some specific dates when that might impact the winter bike trails, and we've given them those maps. And they've been pretty good at replying to those requests, so we feel pretty confident. There will be some impacts on the recreation in the area, but as City Manager alluded to, they're going to be much less, just due to the compromises that Semco's already made, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
So to be really specific, because I feel like those are kind of general answers. I mean, how do we get the answer from Semco? When are they going to do this? And how do we get the answer from Semco? How is, what trees are coming down? When are they, when are they, I mean, you, anybody doing any logging at all, you're going to mark a tree. When, when is all this going to be known and, and so that can be clearly communicated and understood? Because I'm, I'm hearing that people don't know and don't feel like they necessarily understand where, where things are going with this project. And, and, and so, you know, they're, they're coming on to, in, into our space, so let's have them give us some answers. And then, and in addition, if there are significant grading changes to the trails, those trails are very carefully designed, and, and so if, is Semco going to leave it like they found it, in terms, particularly in terms of grading? Because that's a lot of work and a lot of money potentially being spent, and how would that be mitigated if the grading does change after their work?
I can give a quick answer. We will get a timeline for you. I apologize, but the person who was leading this effort couldn't make the meeting tonight to answer that question. And as far as the trees, we anticipate about a 50-foot cut, at least 50-foot cut through the, through the area, with the pipeline going in the middle of it. We've arranged or agreed with Semco that anything under five inches, they will cut, chip, and dispose of. Anything over five inches, they will cut into eight-foot lengths and stack. And that, at a future date, when the pipeline is done, I would like to enter into some type of contract with a logger or something to come and remove those trees. As far as the trails are concerned, the initial discussions, or the discussions I've had with Semco, was that they were going to allow trails as they exist today. Now, I don't know that I ever discussed, will they put it back to themselves to a good working order, or if NTN will do that? But there was always the intent of Semco to, to allow the trails to follow their same path, just it may cross the, the gas line from time to time. There are very few trails, I think, that'll be impacted in this, by this gas line on this side of the road. So that's my understanding.
Any other questions from a commissioner? Seeing none, I will, well, seeing none, let's have the vote, and any commissioner, rather, if you support the motion, please signify by saying yes. No, excuse me, we've got a roll call. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Procton Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. That brings us to the second public comment period. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone desiring?
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. This is a follow-up to the last commission meeting where this commission voted to opt out of the marijuana rules, which meant they were going to wait for the state to promulgate rules before they made rules for the city of Marquette. Um, I think you made the right decision and I want to put on the record the reasons why I think you made the right decision. Within three to four days of you making that decision, the state of Michigan, with a new governor, dramatically changed the way they, uh, have an agency set up to med, to monitor medical marijuana, which is the longest discussion they've had about marijuana. So, the first thing the new governor did was change the state agency that was set up to monitor medical marijuana, which means the state is still in a state of flux, no pun intended, about how to handle marijuana. So, when Mayor Cam, or, excuse me, former mayor Campana, now city commissioner Campana, made the point that the issue was an administrative matter, I think that's the compelling argument to wait, that it is an administrative matter because the state is still figuring out how they want to do this. And when they reorganize the entire agency, that means it's wise to let them do that before you make your own rules. The second reason I think the city made the right decision for now is that, uh, if you follow the pattern, uh, the vast majority, and I mean over ninety-eight percent of the cities in the state of Michigan have made the decision to opt out. This is something that no city wants to tackle first without guidance from the state. There's a time and a place to be an outlier, to do your own thing. There's another time and a place to be patient and prudent and do what, uh, makes sense for your community. And this is the third thing. When you do get around, uh, city attorney Suzanne Larson, hi, we haven't met yet, uh, when you do get around to doing your local rules, um, I'm strongly encouraging you, attorney to attorney, to have a financial disclosure requirement for anybody setting up a marijuana shop in Marquette. And this goes back to a comment I made during that commission meeting two weeks ago. There isn't a bank or financial institution in the city of Marquette that will finance or support or take in money from a marijuana shop. And if you think, young people, if you think I'm exaggerating, I've gone in, I've asked. I said, "I wanted to set up a marijuana shop. Do you want to be my banker?" And the look on people's faces are, "Get out." So, when we're going to have marijuana in the city of Marquette, it's really important that we have the track of the money and who's financing these businesses because, um, there's a lot of money to be made and there's a lot of money to be tracked and it's all going to be done in cash because no bank will touch it. So, I'm encouraging the city attorney and the city manager to put that down on the wish list when you get around to your local rules. Whatever the state requires, we got to be tougher up here because there's no local banks that'll touch it. And that's what I had to say as a follow-up for, I think you made the right decision for the right reasons. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Uh, Matt Ludmiger, fourteen oh six Garfield Ave. I'll take these away now, that decision's been made. Um, I'm, I'm, sorry, I'm twisted because I had another thought in my mind, but with Ms. Brum saying this about last week, um, I want to relay that last week you had about fifty people in the room, uh, but none of you changed your minds from the first time this was brought up originally. Uh, about the money thing, uh, so this seems like a little waste of time that we talked about all these things and put it off to the side. Uh, opting out, um, Ms. Brum is correct, the state changed the rules and the laws and at that time asked for any municipality that opted in to have a seat at the table. So, by opting out, we took ourselves out of that actual decision-making process down in Lansing that you keep talking about as being vital. So, that's one of the, the consequences of it, but it, it just looks bad, that you have so many people, same thing with the, the, uh, trails at, last year. You have so many people asking you to listen to what they have to say and try to convince you otherwise, and yet they seem to not have any, any leverage. And in that sense, I, I'm asking you to, to do more of a community effort, less of a individual. This is what I think should happen, um, especially with the marijuana thing. Again, to get back to it, the state's going to make new laws and new rules and in doing so, any of the money transactions, as long as you're not going across state lines, you're going to be fine. Uh, there are places that are actually operational. Um, they might not be local, but they can be if you say, "Hey, guess what? That Sears building over by, uh, Econo could be used as a, uh, uh, facility like this." And distribution. The other point is, when you talk about it's able, that we're able to grow at our own home, um, I want to say, how many people brew their own beer? You know, make your own mead. We, we don't do that. We're, we're Americans. We buy things at supermarkets. So, we do things on convenience and in that sense, let's give the city of Marquette a cut of that. And that's all we were asking for last week. So, I've got forty seconds. I just want to say again, Mr. Stonehouse, um, very few of your comments have gone through the microphone, so not many of them came up on the, uh, little ticker on the bottom, so I, I didn't really know what you were saying from most of the earlier comments. Um, just keep that in mind, please. Your, your voice, you put your hands in front of your, your mouth between you and the microphone and it didn't come out. There's a couple others that didn't come through. Um, just please, keep that in mind when you're going to say things on the record as a public representative, it would be nice. And thank you, Mr. Angeli, that your voice has been carrying greatly in the microphones. Uh, it comes up as a great transcript. So, in that sense, please, folks, please listen to us a little bit more, not just the three people who speak for three minutes. Thank you.
Anyone else to address the commission? There we go.
Frank Javert, these are my opinions. February twenty-fifth, I said of the maritime road configuration, quote, "The drawing clearly depicts how the proposal would tarnish the character of the neighborhood largely to provide nine parking spaces for the Maritime Museum, which Mr. Stonehouse has so conveniently associated with," end quote. Mr. Campana interrupted, saying, quote, "The speaker said it's to your benefit to have the parking lot." While my statement could imply a conflict of interest, I did not say that. Mr. Campana was out of line for interrupting public comment just for the, our attorney to remind him that the Constitution allows us free speech. My comment was irrefutable as stated so long as Mr. Stonehouse is associated with that museum. Mr. Campana needs to learn to listen to what's said. Correctly as our attorney spoke, I disagree that people should be able to stand here and lie. A problem is Mr. Campana and Ms. Reynolds, for that matter, have misinterpreted what's said and jumped on the high horse based on their misunderstandings. It's beyond belief that Mr. Campana has stunk it up in here for over five years, three as chair, it still doesn't know the rules of decorum. He went on to say he doesn't like me accusing this so-called mayor of arrogance, having not yet learned that when he speaks out of line, he'll only receive more of exactly what he said he doesn't want. One wonders why he keeps putting himself through this. It appears as Mr. Campana used me to kiss up to his cohort, a game other members have occasionally played through the years. Do not use me to play a game of kissy-kissy, especially to benefit a chair who's the ultimate player of that game. We've documented him twisting stories to give our fire department and his co-escort due praise, but which he could have just as easily given without embellishing. How dare Mr. Campana ask for respect that neither man has earned? Let's clarify that I'm only referring to two members now, Mr. Campana and Stonehouse. They're due no respect from me. We've endured enough of this conflict of interest nonsense during the boathouse fiasco and other items. There's a vast difference between legal culpability and what's right versus wrong, the latter being the criteria that I follow when commenting. I'm far from being a perfect person, but have proven to be darned close in my criticism of this board. I never personally insulted any member of that club as accused, with the accuser unable to provide an example because none exists. I forever believe the wife's membership in that club influenced the approval of a boathouse twice at different locations. No personal insult, though, no known money changed hands, yet as dirty as it gets. What matters is the influence and how the decisions in here affect our land out there. Pardon the repetition, but this board simply is not absorbing the gist of what anyone with an opposing viewpoint says.
Anybody else to address the commission? Seeing none. Commissioner Commentine, Commissioner Campana, if you will begin, please.
Bear with me, I have to get somewhere. I would like to say that, um, this is a pleasurable meeting tonight. We have the students here and, uh, it's always fun to have them here. The, uh, these are our future leaders and no doubt they're going to go on to do well in school. Perhaps they'll be the leaders of the community and we sure hope they will. Someday they may be sitting here. At age eighteen, they can run for commission, so it's something that they can keep in mind. We also passed, uh, we get, we're getting started on the, um, Founder's Landing project and, again, this is an exciting project for the city, the residents. Uh, it's going to make our shoreline really, really nice and I, I think people will really gravitate towards it and enjoy it. I wasn't going to reply, I will reply to Mr. Verito. I will tell him that he has a right to say what he wants, but it doesn't mean I have to agree with him. Um, you know, every meeting, he's either complaining or criticizing about somebody or something. But if during this three-minute rant of his, if he insinuates that the mayor or any commissioner is wrongfully, has a conflict of interest, as he did, I will call a point of order and I'm going to stop your speech. If you make derogatory remarks to my mayor or any commissioner, as you did when you were, used the word arrogant three times at the last meeting, I will stop your rant and I'll interrupt you and your speech will have to stop. Please realize, we're trying to do good things here. We don't need to listen to your crap. So, next time, you better, uh, choose your words carefully, please. Thank you.
Good meeting. It was actually short, Mike. I'm proud of you. You just, you just make it short for the, to show the people that could be, usually get them to look for it or something. Normally meetings are like three hours long, four hours long. Mike prefers four hours, but sometimes he's nice and makes it like an hour and a half, but you never know. But, good meeting and Park Lighthouse will continue to do maybe this year. It's going to be a lot of work. The money got took away from College Ave because we were waiting to set it up at College Ave where the hospital does. Hospital's got a lot of deconstruction, construction going on and the city didn't see a sense in fixing the road and have it all banged up with equipment, you know, hauling, and moving stuff around. Just didn't make sense, so it will get fixed eventually, just not next year, but everybody works on the park, more Lighthouse Park, I think it's good. And we, we had a work session there, we bet with all the authority and we looked at the drawings, you know, either keeping the bike path slash road as is, which most people know it's a bike path, they walk it, they bike it, do whatever they want. There's like one, one person that was a, didn't, that wanted access to a road, but then sometimes the emergency museum drives there too, but there's, they have parking there as well, but basically it was, we looked at the alternative, we asked him, what are the alternatives? The alternative is remove this old brick building with an old pump house in it and then make the, make path go climbing hill up behind the station, through the trees, around the lake and back down, which, like, it would take like a hundred-year-old trees, which we didn't want to do. So, we said, "What's the alternative?" He said, "We have to ban the road, make it a bike path, much-used path." And I begged, you know, it'll be used as is, like everybody does right now. I said, "Well, that's a, that's a good idea, you know, instead of ripping apart." And the other thing is, yes, you could make a bike path around the building through the woods, but then, you know, everybody complains about the snow rule this year, trying to get an emergency vehicle down through there, trying to get a truck through there for maintenance or anything, it just would be out of work, so just leave as is. And, yes, the, the old parking lot where the Coast Guard building is, it's going to be developed for the good, where the help with water runoff, get more green space, and you can approve parking for the emergency, you know, bring out the museum, you have to park in front of the building and walk around. It's that hard, but people up here just don't like the, they like, want to park in front of the building and walk in. We look at, that's the thing, that's why our, our malls are dying, because people don't want to walk through mall, they want to park in front of the store and see where they're going, like all the big box stores. You're walking just as far as you walk through mall, but just the way it is. So, it will work out good and, I said, the, if the new pier gets built, it might look at, you know, it's going to be lighting, it'll all be nice, there's super good designs, it's nothing concrete, you know, it's going to be done in a couple of years. Might look at closing the gate at night possibly, closing the gate at bad weather, like they do other places, you know, just for the safety. The city doesn't do stuff just, uh, because they want to be mean, they do stuff to be public safety. You know, that's why they closed the island. I mean, we had those huge storms at the island and somebody else, they're taking pictures and get washed, washed to the lake. You know, it's to protect people from being, I saw, you know, when the, with the water being, so I saw waves crashing over the rocks along Lake Shore and some guy, some car from by the town was parked right in front of the rocks. Car wa, the waves rushing, breaking right over in front of their car and behind their car. Like, okay, so it's more just to protect people from being, you know, look at that stuff. And I agree with Mr. Campana. I mean, I was told when I first came into the mission, do not mention the person that talks to public comment, he will go after you. Do not get involved, he just wants to go after you. Our former commissioner, Mike Plard, went after him because he said, "I dealt with people way worse than that for twenty years, the prison system. I don't care about them. I can go after them, doesn't matter to me." So, we learned to stay away, but for twenty-plus years, he's just, he comes and says he represents everybody, but I don't hear anybody else coming here being, complaining about everything. I mean, if somebody wants to complain about something, come complain, but for twenty-plus years, he's insulted everybody on the board, mayors, former mayors, board managers, he's insulted everybody. And, you know, going to the commissioner Campana's wife, because she's in the rowing club, I mean, all that stuff is just back and forth, so, I mean, him saying bad things about us, just, we can take it, but when you insult somebody else's family, that's where you kind of have to draw a line and pressure Campana and Mr. Stonehouse, yes, he's involved, but he's been all, very, involved in merchandising for years. The rule is if you have financial in, into, into the, he has no, he's just a board member, that's all. So, he has no finance, he doesn't get any payment on it, you know? It's like people said before, when concrete bids go, "I work for a concrete company." Do I want to, and uses the concrete goes to the competitor. Do I make a profit off it? No. I mean, so, just look at your comments and just be wary of that stuff. But everybody, enjoy the sunny weather, it's supposed to actually be sunny and warm this week, I think, so get ready for the next big flood.
You?
Me?
You?
Sure.
Missed one on the end there.
I think we missed one. Yes. Brayden, do you want to go first?
Oh, I'm sorry, missed one there.
Hello? Oh, I just want to say, uh, thank you for everyone who made it like possible for us to all attend this meeting. It was a really wonderful experience for us to all see how government works at more of a local level and I just wanted to say thank you for this amazing experience.
To add on to what Brayden is saying, I would also like to say thank you to the board and to the mayor and Campana. I think you guys are all doing a wonderful job and I'm glad to know that I can actually get up there for three minutes and rant if I would like to. So, thank you for allowing me to sit here, it's been an honor.
So, I think it's interesting that, um, we're meeting the week of the Sunshine, uh, Sunshine Week with Open Meeting Act and Open Records Law and the fact that we're trying to increase access to the public and that with the passage of Prop, Prop Three, as a city clerk talked about, we, we're going to probably have more voters, hopefully have more voters, uh, be getting involved in the process going forward in this 2019 election. Uh, one year from today is the primary, uh, for the 2020 election as well. So, um, again, the chance for the public to get involved and think about who our leaders are and the decisions that we'll get to make. Um, and I want to thank the staff for, uh, the hard work that they're doing. We got a lot of projects moving right now in the city and, um, and I know there's, um, a balance between wanting to have, um, keep things moving forward, keep people and keeping people engaged, engaged and communicating with them and, um, the more we can utilize, uh, you know, getting things up on webs, get on the internet, um, and moving, making sure that people know, have the information to see what we're doing. And I want to say that the city commission for the, uh, high school students here, you know, we're, it's that old- you know, we're, it's that old saying of the buck stops here, but the work sessions and the committee work is the, is a place where a lot of the work happens and we're, we're the folks who make the final decision and are responsible for that final decision, but there's a lot of place for input in those other kinds of meetings, the work sessions and the committee hearings. And finally, I, um, want to say that the crews that have been working with our snow have been working literally twenty-four seven since February third. And how grateful am I, um, that, that we have a terrific group of people working to make that, um, this enormous snow year that we've had. Not just me, but I want to express my gratitude, but the many, the residents of Marquette for the hard work they've put in, literally twenty-four seven since February third. And we've got this melt coming at us, it's going to be interesting, uh, we will see what happens. Um, and, uh, you know, maybe if you have a few minutes to go dig out your storm drain, you might be, uh, I know I did this weekend. And there's more meetings, uh, to come on these big projects and issues and I hope to see more people there. Thank you.
Please.
Thank you. I've got a few things. So, um, first of all, thank you to the student council members for coming tonight. I really appreciate you wanting to be a part of the public process, learn how it works. Um, I served on the Marquette Senior High School Student Council from two thousand two to two thousand five, so I've been in your shoes and I, I hope to see big things out of you in the next several years to decades. Hope some of you stick around in Marquette or come back eventually. Um, I do actually, really, um, go over to the high school, I work, um, for Marquette schools sometimes and talk to the student council too. I'm not sure if I've seen any of you yet, I think I had, um, some of the freshmen last year that I was helping out, but anyway, I'll probably see you around. Um, I would like to issue a challenge to all of you tonight. When I'm done with my comment, if it's okay with Mr. Mayor, I'd like you all to say one thing that you learned tonight that you didn't know before you came in today, just quick. Um, okay, so a couple of things. We had a work session on Lake Shore Boulevard. I'm wondering if, um, one city manager has his comments, if he can update us on the timeline as to where that sits and when we might be taking a vote on that. So, as part of my role on the commission, I, I see it as my responsibility to try to engage with the public, communicate with them. Part of how I do that is on social media and recently I've had some questions from residents not knowing how to contact the commission. So I wanted to say here that, um, if you go on the City of Marquette website and you click on the City Commission, there is a listing of all of our contact info, um, email addresses, some folks list their phone numbers, so that is a great way to contact. Obviously, always public comment is an option at our meetings and work sessions, but, um, there were some comments folks were leaving on Facebook that they wanted to email and they didn't know how to do that. So I just wanted to say that publicly in case anyone out there is listening and didn't know how to reach us, that we are available. And then lastly, um, Chris, could you possibly repeat the dates that you said for the, um, packets due for the election? I didn't write them down quickly enough and I think they're important to repeat again for the public.
Sure, the packets are available, um, Monday, April first.
Okay.
The deadline to return them is by four PM on the twenty-third.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I ask the, uh, student council members their one thing they learned? Let's start down at the far end. Thank you.
Uh, one thing I learned is the amount of time that's given to hearing public opinion and public comments about certain issues. I didn't know that we had that before and I think that's a really cool thing.
One thing I learned is that you can basically say anything during public comment, so that's pretty interesting to me.
Um, one thing that I learned is just the involvement that you have with the community. Um, I didn't realize how much of an impact they can leave for you guys. Um, at least it is an option for them and I would just like to thank everyone for allowing us to have this opportunity. Um, it was a great learning experience that I can speak on all of student council behalf and we will be sharing this with the other members, um, about what we learned, so thank you for that.
Tonight, I learned a lot about how the procedure works. It's, I think it's super interesting how orderly it is in here and how you guys stay on the schedule. I think that's a very, very cool aspect of this commission. Um, one thing I'd like to say about the, the new plans for the pier. I know the current boardwalk by the Hampton Inn is a super hotspot for prom pictures and formal dances and I think that the, the new one coming in is going to add to that even more. And I bet you our fellow peers will be, will agree with me on that, so. And then I, yeah, I'd like to thank you for inviting us here again tonight and I hope to come back in the future. Thank you.
I learned about how efficiently this is run, even with all the work put into it and the large PDF files that each commissioner reads through and still, you know, it's, it's been like hour and a half and we covered everything, so, yeah.
I learned, um... Wait, I got to start with "um" first, I guess. My turn? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always, you know, my second time going through this with the, with the high school students. Uh, I was as nervous as you were last time, because I think it was like my second or third meeting, so, um, good to see you again. Oh, it's, uh, it's been, we got a bromance going here. I, I just really, I think that, uh, I mentioned it before the meeting, that, that these students are being a part of this community right now at a time that is probably, you know, as, as active and, and things are changing, um, and, and things are happening more now than, geez, I can't imagine, you know, probably going back to the, to the days when the, when the harbors were being established and the shipping and every, all of everything was really kicking in and, and mining was really kicking in. I mean, I just see a, a correlation with that and I, and I think, and I told them, I said, you know, someday when you're sitting there talking with your kids, remember that, the day that the crazy bald guy on the city commission said that, um, you know, to remember this day and, and to look back and, and tell your kids about it. So, that's, uh, and I want you really to do that because it is something, you guys are, are part of something right here that is just monumental and I've been expressing the same sentiment to my, my daughter who's a freshman and I wish that she would come to this meeting with, uh, as part of the student council, I'll push her for that next year. Anyway, um, I'd like to thank the city workers, uh, jumping on that bandwagon again. I almost was late tonight, uh, came out of my church, working on a project there with, uh, with their, in our basement and this wall of water came down Blaker Street and had nowhere to go except for almost inside the building. It was, it was building up real quick, it was a quick melt and, and everything started to flow downhill. Couple of quick phone calls and, uh, you know, the city, uh, the guys that are working as part of the city water department showed up with a, a front-end loader to try and open up some drains, that's a notorious street for, for bad drainage, but my point is, is that they got there and they saved us from, uh, from potential flooding and, uh, I just want to say thank you because this next week is going to be a bear with the weather that we're having. Please, uh, if you can, get out and, and do a little bit of work yourself and also take care of your houses. Uh, I know this is a little bit off the cuff, but there's going to be a lot of snow load on, on your houses if you haven't had your roofs, um, taken care of. Get out and take at least the first three feet of that snow off and, and give that sun or, or rain somewhere to go, I should say, uh, as, as it melts the snow and, and drips off your house. That snow load is going to be insane, so please beware. I would like to also jump back into the, uh, hot topics that we're talking about right now with the, whether it's the lighthouse park or, um, the, the future of the Lake Shore Boulevard or these piers and, and just reiterate how in line it is with the city's master plan. Things that have been laid out as far as the direction that, that we, um, sitting commissioners and, and previous commissions way before us have, have laid out, uh, as, as best practice, um, for where we're headed. And, um, I just, I'm, I'm really happy to see that that's part of this process. The part, process that we've mentioned tonight with the kids is that all of this stuff has gone through vetting, uh, whether it's through a planning commission or an advisory board or Presque Isle Advisory or all these, you know, Parks and Rec and Arts and Culture and all these things that, that it goes through before it gets to us. That's where a lot of the work, um, you know, starts and, and just, just comes and ends with us most of the time. But, um, you know, that's, that's, the city's master plan is just a document that, um, I think is brilliant and I, that, uh, that I'm, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that there's a reason why we do what we do with, with these things. So, um, with that being said, I think that's pretty, oh, Green Burial. Uh, I've had some conversations with a number of people. I'm glad you're here tonight, Mr. West, thank you for your comments. Uh, I've had conversations with, uh, funeral directors, with, um, uh, city officials and, and things along those lines. I think that this is headed in the right direction and, uh, it's a very interesting concept, something very new to me, uh, outside of the Native American ritual of the, uh, of their burial, burial process, but, um, which I am aware of, but I think that this is something that I'm looking forward to being a part of the, uh, the wishes of some people's, uh, end of life and continuation to what's next. So, thank you.
Well, I think most of the commissioners... I think most of the commissioners hit on the topics that I was going to speak to. Um, I appreciate all of you guys coming, that's great that you're being involved at this level. I was also on student council too and here I am now. Um, so, the only comment I have this evening is I sent an email to the city manager asking about the hospital and I'm curious if, I've had a lot of interest in, um, touring the hospital and I know that they're moving over there soon and I think that that would be something of interest for some of us commissioners that, well, I was here towards the beginning, but I think most of us weren't, so I think it'd be something good to be involved in. So, um, other than that, I don't have any other comments.
Anything further?
Well, let me, let me back clean up again. Couple of points if I can. I can remember fifteen, twenty years ago, sitting down with the, uh, some of the city commissioners at the time as, as well as some of the folks in city government. And it was just after the city had purchased, uh, much of the railroad property that became Founder's Landing and the ore dock and that whole, whole kit and caboodle. And included, of course, was the piling field. And I remember the great discussion that was going on, is should the city rip them out or should they keep them? And luckily, the decision was made to keep them. But the point, kind of circling back a little bit to what Commissioner Schlegel was saying, is that all these things kind of connect. When you have that plan put together to keep and to retain and to look at the future and then you blend those into the master plan, you can do these projects as they have an opportunity to be done. But you've got to go way back to begin to scent the seeds for those before you can really have the fruit today and I, I think that's where we are with that. Uh, certainly, um, my thanks to the students, council folks for being here. Great opportunity on both sides of, I think, to, to learn a little bit. Uh, was at a, a meeting, uh, last week with a climatologist, uh, who was, his particular field of study is Lake Superior and he was telling us that in the snowpack around the big lake, around Lake Superior, there's ten to twenty inches of water. That's ten to twenty inches of water, not snow, of water within the snowpack and all of that is within the drain basin. So, depending on what kind of spring we get, how quickly that comes in the Lake Superior, and right now we're within two inches of being record high, uh, that can be very interesting for the shoreline communities. Now, how that applies to Marquette or not becomes somewhat problematic, but it, it can be a very interesting spring with all of the snow that we've had and still have. And that becomes certainly part of the problem. Something I'd, I'd like to kind of feed to the, uh, G E I guys doing the design on, on the piling field is the opportunity for public art. We do have a public art commission, what a great place to be able to do something that would be reflective of who we are as a community, our culture, our background and our history. Lastly, a comment you often hear in here is, hey, last meeting or two meetings ago, you had fifteen or twenty people that came in here and told you to do something and you didn't do it, so obviously you're not listening to the public. And you scratch your head a little bit and you say, I've got about twenty-one thousand public out there and they talk to us all kinds of ways all the time. And when an interest group comes in and says, you know, they've got ten or fifteen folks representing this, they've got five over here, so obviously the ten or fifteen over here, they must be the right ones, you have to go with them, because, I mean, that's not the way democracy works. And that's certainly not the way representational government works and that's what we have here, is not voting by the number of people that walk through the door, but voting on, and this is a tough concept, the public good. What is the best decision for the entire public? I have to carry the responsibility, each one of our commissioners carries the same responsibility of representing everybody in this city that voted for them, everybody that voted against them and everybody that didn't vote. We've got everybody. So when decisions come, you have to make decisions that are not based on what's best for this interest group. You have to make that decision on what is based, or what is best for the entire community, for the city. And that's a hard thing, when you've got a whole bunch of people in here talking about something and you, therefore somebody says, well, you ought to go with whatever they say. I also charge people who listen to that, in other words, when you have the opportunity to hear ten or fifteen people talk about a topic, to try and find out, are they saying the same thing? Or are they presenting arguments that might be different, that might be unique, that might be something that you haven't heard before? Are they bringing up new, new information? Or is it just people getting up saying the same thing? Because that happens too sometimes. So, again, I, I throw that out as food for thought, but, uh, and lastly, I too want to commend our, our DPW workers and the folks from the wastewater treatment plant and all the folks that are out there working their tails off for us trying to get the, the streets open and more importantly, perhaps than anything, provide the traffic lanes they can for visibility on corners. This has certainly been a terrific snow month. I believe it's been a hundred inches we received in February. I think we've still got a hundred inches out there. So we didn't lose any of it and that creates the difficulty with where you put it and how you, how you see it. And our guys are just doing, and our gals, an absolutely terrific job. So, Mr. Manager, floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, again, thank you for your continued support. I appreciate the, uh, the support and moving ahead with our projects, they are very important. Uh, regarding the hospital tour, I've been working on scheduling something. Um, I do know that there is an event coming up, that will involve tours, which the commission will be invited to. I'll make sure those, I'm just waiting for the invitations to come in. So if we don't schedule a separate tour, we'll have, uh, an opportunity for a tour, I know for sure. Lake Shore Boulevard, I haven't really set a timeline for that, um, other than avoiding March, because everybody seems to be gone in March. Apparently it's spring break or something like that. City managers don't take spring breaks, that's all I got to say about that. But, uh, but I think, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at maybe probably April or May, April would be my preference, but I'd like to put something together for one of the meetings in April. I have community office hours Wednesday, ten o'clock, Peter White Public Library this Wednesday. And lastly, I just, uh, got a text from John Swenson, the Parks and Rec, uh, director that just left here and he sent me a news broadcast, the company that we're likely to be hiring floating docking systems in Cedarville for our docks at Presque Isle and, uh, the new, new marina, or the new, uh, pilings is burning. It's burning at the moment, so we, we could have a delay in our docks. So just a little heads up there, it's not my fault. Okay, I have, that's it, thank you.